Yeah, let's do it, man.
Okay.
I thought I thumbs you up.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Village Council Regular Meeting, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, show the time at six oh one, and I show we have a full quorum. So, thank you for being here. First up, we have the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes?
Nope.
Nothing. Wow, that's a first. All right, I'll need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next up, we have the adoption of the previous minutes. Everyone have a chance to read those? No questions? All right, need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next up, President of the League.
President, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up? All right, feedback. Do you have some feedback?
I do. All right, so I just wanted to start off with, and unfortunately, it's not overly positive, but it is disappointing, but I would say not surprising, that Marvin mandate chose to mock my family and post my husband's private information online. They chose to hide behind anonymity instead of criticizing me to my face. I'm here twice a month, feel free to come in. So, for a group aligned with Marvin United and claiming to value integrity, your relationship with the truth is on shaky ground. I'm not even sure you know what that definition is. My family and I were not disruptive at the candidate forum. We were merely holding the candidates accountable. They wouldn't answer a question. Every voter has the right to hold these candidates accountable. But I'm not going to stoop to your level, but don't mistake my restraints for weakness. Forgiveness doesn't cancel out accountability. Your actions or inactions on some people's part are truly pathetic.
All right, anything else from anyone? Okay, next up, we have presentations. All right, first thing we have is...
That's all you got.
Consider the adoption of the resolution and appreciation of the Young Men's Service League Marvin Chapter.
You want us to motion it?
I would suggest that the mayor read it aloud first.
Read it aloud.
Okay. RS two oh two five dash one oh dash oh one, resolution and appreciation of the Young Men's Service League Marvin Chapter. Whereas the Village of Marvin desires to recognize and honor community organizations for their dedicated and distinguished contributions to the welfare of Marvin and Union County, and whereas the Young Men's Service League, Y M S L, Marvin Chapter comprised of mothers and their high school age sons, was founded less than two years ago and has already dedicated more than sixty-nine hundred hours of volunteer service to the local community. We benefited from that ourselves right here. And whereas members of the Y M S L Marvin Chapter have supported a wide range of nonprofit organizations and community groups by packing food, supporting families in crisis, assisting at community events, and fostering leadership, responsibility, and compassion in the next generation. And whereas, in the summer of twenty twenty-five, Y M S L Marvin partnered with the Marvin community to host a record-breaking food drive in support of Common Heart Union County's local food pantry, collecting nearly five thousand pounds of food in just two weeks, enough to provide thousands of meals for neighbors in need. And whereas this outpouring of generosity reflects the heart of the Marvin community and advances Common Heart's mission of fostering a small revolution of kindness throughout Union County. And whereas the efforts of the Y M S L Marvin Chapter exemplify the values of service, leadership, and community spirit that strengthen the bonds between families and neighbors in Marvin. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the Village of Marvin, that appreciation be shown to the Young Men's Service League Marvin Chapter in honor of their continued service generosity and dedication to the residents of the Village of Marvin and the greater Union County community. The council and staff encourage residents to thank the members of the Y M S L Marvin for their service and positive impact on our community. Adopted this fourteenth day of October two thousand twenty-five.
Do you want to motion too?
Now you need a motion.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion to adopt the resolution of appreciation of the Young Men's Service League Marvin Chapter as presented.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None, motion passes. And I get to present this?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, take the picture from here up.
This is our, this is our chapter president here to receive the resolution. Tracy Churn, that's our chapter president.
We'll have this in our next newsletter.
Okay, all right, what do we got next? Managers' report. Christina, you got anything for us? Anything going on?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Cancel. I have one thing real quick. The GTSP, we all had discussed this at the last meeting, and there was some clarity on, some confusion on acquisition, engineering, that kind of stuff. We went back and looked. Engineering and acquisition was initially put into the scope of work somehow. I don't know what happened, but it was removed in the submittal of the portal. So that being said, we do not have funds for acquisition on this project. That being a big unknown at this point, we do not feel comfortable as a staff recommending approval on this because we just don't know what we don't know until engineering is conducted. We have went back to the grantor and asked them if we can do a scope amendment to include some level of acquisition funds. We have yet to get an answer on that, but the initial conversations that we had were not very hopeful for that aspect. So, we are probably looking to recommend you not to approve this at this point in time. We can always go back to the drawing board on the, on the next cycle and be more prepared. We've submitted it once, we kind of have the groundwork laid out. We would feel more comfortable knowing we had some money in there for acquisition in another phase. So that's currently where we're at. I don't know if you have any more comments to say on that. Austin's been kind of taking the lead on this project. So at this point in time, I am not recommending you guys to approve it unless we get some information back from the granting agency that tells us otherwise with a project amendment scope.
Is this going to look bad on us if we have applied for it and now we're going to turn it down? Will it affect future grants through the same program?
I don't think, I don't think it will.
Okay, I mean, they, I mean...
We can ask that question to them, but...
I'd like to know. I mean, I don't know that that's going to change our decision, especially since we have so many unknowns, but I would still like to at least know, or maybe explain to them the reason that we're turning it down if that's the route we decide to go.
Okay, we can ask, yeah.
This is a pilot program. This is like the first year they've awarded this grant, so there's definitely going to be some...
Learning curve.
So, there's going to be a learning curve here. It's the same division that did the Part F grant that we were awarded. So we already do have a relationship with some of these people, but we can definitely get back and find that out.
Does anyone have any other questions or concerns?
That's all you had?
That's all I have for now, yes.
All right, thank you. Planners' report. Hunter, how are you?
Just got a few things to update you on. One, I believe Kristina sent out an email just kind of updating you guys on the legislative update. One of them was, one of the new laws that was passed was Session Law twenty twenty-five ninety-four, which had a bunch of different provisions in it, but one of them did amend one sixty D. And with our agreement with, in focus, they, our ordinance has already been updated, but in short, that change was between rezonings or text amendments and stuff, you would have to wait, if your application got denied, you would have to wait at least six months before resubmitting or submitting the application, for whatever reason. That, we can't do that now. And so, essentially, if a rezoning request gets denied, they can keep submitting and going right back through the process as long, you know, as many times as they want. But that, so that may come to you as a text amendment, but since the way our ordinance is written and what Rick within Focus informed me is that pretty, it's administrative, so I'll let you maybe make that call, and we can chat about that. If we need to bring it to a, as a formal amendment, but Rick doesn't think we need to, but I can forward you the email from him, and we can discuss. Any questions on that? Okay. Just a reminder, Arbor Day is next Saturday from one to three at the park. Come out, it's being advertised, we're, have the Trees Union there, as well as Habitat Builders, planning for a good event. We got a tree, it's at the park currently, and I think we're doing a naming contest to name the tree that's planted for our first Arbor Day celebration. So just want to be a reminder on that. Hope to see you guys there, as well as any members from the public. So, other than that, that's all I got unless there's any questions.
So, Hunter, to that point on Arbor Day?
Mm-hmm.
I've got a thing here that says City Monroe proclaiming observing Monroe Arbor Day, October eleventh, twenty twenty-five. And I, someone had sent me a message saying that we were getting called out because we were so high and mighty that we were going to proclaim our own Arbor Day. Can you explain Arbor Day to me?
Yeah, so, in short, with the Tree City USA accreditation, basically, we got to, you know, designate a day, could be a week, month, whatever, so really kind of celebrate and educate trees. So in short, it's, I know that, I think the state Arbor Day is in March, and it's when we are celebrating Arbor Day. And municipalities throughout that are part of the Tree City USA program, they all celebrate it on different days. In fact, we were originally going to do the event this past weekend and make that Arbor Day, but we knew Monroe was doing it, and so we didn't want to compete slash pool resources, pool resources from Trees Union and stuff like that. So that's why we moved it to the twenty-fifth when we're hosting it. But even on the Tree City USA website, it says it can be celebrated any day, anytime. As long, the main focus is obviously getting the word out, trying to, and using that time to educate and promote tree, tree health, tree planting, I mean, all of the above.
I just wanted to get some clarity because I, I knew the reason we were doing it, but, and I saw the City Monroe did it as well. So thanks for providing that bit of clarification.
I'll mention too, some events like National Night Out has a proclaimed date, but sometimes it does get changed, so there's other events that could, I mean, we could have a national day for some type of event, but for whatever reason, it could be changed locally.
Yeah, and I'll also add, the reason it was actually recommended by Keith, the Union County Urban Forester, to do it in October because it's the, this month's the start of planting season for trees, where in March is the, is the end of planting season. So, that's kind of, you know, he recommended to us to do it in the fall just so we can use that opportunity, obviously, to educate people on tree plantings and use that at the beginning of the planting season compared to the end. So that's why we did it this month, and I think that's something that we'll continue to do.
That would be me. So a couple of things. I had updated you all a couple weeks ago about the Marvin Eford Park emergency exit. I've done a little bit more research on this to try to get this project rolling. We initially budgeted around thirty thousand dollars, just as a reminder. Construction estimates, just, these are high-level estimates, these are not bid estimates. This is just what our engineer estimates it to be, around twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars for construction. So that leaves anywhere from ten to five thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars for engineering studies. Upon looking at this study from Dewberry, it came back in, the final estimate came back in, close to ten thousand dollars for engineering, so we're already kind of pushing the budget there. And then upon looking at this further, this did not include a survey. We did reach out to DOT, a survey is required, so that's going to be another five thousand dollars. I did get another estimate from Dewberry for the same work, and they're estimating around sixteen thousand. So, just letting you guys know that we're already ten thousand dollars above the project budget that we...
So, survey being required, that kind of, I'm wondering why? Because it's not on either of our borders that border anybody else, it's kind of internal.
Yeah, let me see if I can read what...
Because I could understand maybe a survey being done if it affected somebody else's property to one side or the other.
For utility location.
Oh, utility service, okay.
We did have the engineers reach out to DOT and talk with them specifically, and they said that they would require a survey. So, I don't know if y'all want to put a pin in this and just see, you know, see if...
I mean, do we really need an emergency exit?
Well, keep in mind, we talked about it as not just an emergency exit, but when we do have events, we could use it as an opportunity to have kind of a, another income and outgo. You know, some of our events, you got people coming and going. And, and we typically have officers if it's going to be that large, but...
But is it going to hook into the other parking lots or just the front parking lot?
Just the front parking lot.
So then, you're still basically going to have to get them out there and then over and then out. Yeah, I don't know, I just, I don't know, I, it seems like a lot for something that shouldn't be that much.
Was this, I'm trying to go back, was this something that somebody, was it the Sheriff's Department that suggested this? I know there was...
It was recommended in case there was an accident or something that impaired the main entrance availability for EMS or police or fire to get in and out of the park? Because there is only one entrance and exit in the same driveway. So if there is any kind of activity that happens or that blocks it, then there's no way to get anybody in or out of the park.
I mean, I get it, but dang, that just seems ridiculously, I mean, isn't, aren't utility locators supposed to come out for free? Don't you call like eight-one-one and they come out and do it for free?
That's generally what I do.
I mean, to me, it just seems ridiculously expensive, and I can't, I can't wrap my head around...
I'd like justification from NCDOT as to why we have to have a survey for, for that one. It's a free service for eight-one-one.
They may want to know... And did we already determine whether or not we were doing it in the location where there's already a gate and a culvert there?
I mean, I think that's what we were trying to do, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
So, if there's already a driveway easement with NCDOT, I don't know why we wouldn't be able to just use the same driveway easement? Because there was an existing driveway there.
Yeah, and I don't know their process in terms of how, if something's been abandoned for so long, I'm sure it has to go back through the same process due to other driveways that could have been installed during that time period. So I think it's, I don't know this for sure, but I would assume that it's kind of like a fresh slate just because it's been abandoned for so long.
Wouldn't hurt to ask the question, because if there was an existing driveway there, there is a culvert there existing. So, I mean, I don't know why we couldn't just use it.
And they probably want a survey because they want to have an electronic or, or record they can put in one database to have all of the ingress and egress. So, they have site distances that they'll allow between access and driveways, so they probably want it to make sure it's precise and to get it downloaded into their system.
The utility thing I don't understand, but that I can understand.
That's probably closer to it.
That makes more sense.
About a year and a half ago, you know, event, the Sheriff's Department came to us and said, if things don't change here, you got too many people here, we're going to shut it down. And it wasn't a suggestion, it was a warning to us that we had to do something.
Well, that's what I remember. I remember there was some sort of impetus that we had...
Too many people.
Do this.
It was, it was trick or treat. So, I, I feel like that's a good problem to have.
Yeah, make a note of that, we're actually having people show up to the community events when we're...
Too many people.
Nobody shows up to, yeah.
I, I don't know, I just feel like that's a ridiculous amount of money for something that's kind of already there that...
I'll look into those answers, so the questions...
...travel down and clear out some trees and, oh, Andy, maybe you and, maybe you and Joe can do your DIY projects. Considering how much money you guys have saved the village over the years by doing projects yourself, Jamie? I'm just the supervisor, so I don't actually do it, so...
So I'll ask why the survey requirements, and then if we can use the old driveway permit that was existing. Any other questions that y'all have? Okay. Moving on to the next thing, the strap timeline update. Provided an updated timeline in your agenda packets. Due to us relocating to a separate location that we initially applied for, it's caused a little bit of delay. So we are not anticipating to start construction until spring to summer of next year. So just so you're aware, I'll look to come back to you all in the next couple of months with a hundred percent plan, so you can look at it and see what those plans are. We have been in communication with those HOAs, so they're aware of the exact locations and additional things that we'll need from them at some point in time. But we're currently in the surveying and engineering phase, and then we'll move into the permitting. The muscle surveyor was out today looking for those, so that process should be wrapping up pretty soon. So, any questions? That's all I have at this time.
Okay, thank you. Parks and Rec.
All right, during the... Oh, I'm sorry. Parks and Green... Yeah. I was about to sound a different person. I'm a refined adult. So, October twenty-fourth, five P, five PM to nine PM, Trick or Treat, Eford Park. We're looking good right now. We're up to twenty vendors signed up to come hand out candy, and we still got, you know, another week or so to collect more. Looking for a big turnout again, we always have a lot of fun there. We got a bounce house, there's some crafts and free candy. So wear a good costume and come out and enjoy it. Yeah. November fifteenth, Second Annual Car Show at Eford Park. It'll be from eight AM to ten AM. November fifteenth, Saturday morning, come out, there's going to be coffee trucks, breakfast food trucks. Partner up with first-class cars, they bring some cool vendors with them, they bring some cool cars. So, if you got a cool car in the community, bring it out. If you just want to see some cars, come on out.
I just, you switched it too, and I was good for the first...
You were good, well, I heard you were good, that's why I switched it. And then, so after the car show, the whole month of November, Friendship Tree. You'll be able to stop in here at Village Hall, off of our big Christmas tree in the lobby. We'll have name tags up there, take one. Look for some assistance at the front. We need you to fill out a participant form just so we know who's got who. And yeah, so pretty much you adopt a child and give them a Christmas for the, for this year. So, we have sixty-five names we signed up for. The due date that gifts will need to be hereby is December second. We have a really great volunteer organization who's going to help us package gifts and load the gifts, and they will do that the night of December second, so we need all the gifts back here by then.
That is with me. Are we looking pretty good to get the names by the beginning? Because I've actually had people texting me when we're going to get the names.
Yes, yeah, so I've stayed away from like saying a hard date of like, you know, we're going to start November first or something like that, because it's looking good, things seem good right now, but I don't, we've kind of shied away from saying a date online, but it's, it'll happen in November, but as soon as it hap, as soon as we get them, it's very bang-bang to get them on the tree.
What are you hearing from the Christmas Bureau? We're looking pretty good from the beginning of November?
Yeah, yeah. They'd like to have them to us at the end of this month, like the twenty-somethings of this month, but, you know...
Under promise and over delivered.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, so, and then to wrap up the year, tree lighting, December sixth, Marvin Eford Park, five PM to seven PM, Santa Claus comes out, free hot chocolate, free coffee, free cookies. Hopefully, we're going to have some cool performances from our local high school choirs, bands. So it's just a fun little evening that we have out there at the park to kind of get you in the Christmas spirit. So, yeah.
I just put a note out to the school to get me someone, because there's a new director over there for the band.
Right. Actually talked to, met with some people from the band today, they're going to utilize our park for their, uh, brand, yeah. Seems very, yep, very cool, they're going to do it. Yeah, yeah, we met down there and we worked out a good spot.
Good to see us working with them.
When you get a date for the Friendship Tree, would you let us know?
Absolutely.
Wait till the next meeting or something?
Someone will let you know. Someone, someone will let you know. This is also my, my last council meeting, so this has been a lot of fun, getting to work with all y'all, getting to know everybody. But, yeah, we had a really good time, so it was very nice. Thank you all for being so cool.
Oh, it's going to be Jill, is it? I feel like that was very sarcastic, but...
All right, deputies' report. You're up.
Sir.
Sir, Mr. Head.
The only thing I want to add to this report is today I had two calls, almost back-to-back, and the scams are coming around again. And this one, they claim that they're from the Union County Sheriff's Office, and they are... Yeah, your neighborhood got hit today with those calls. And what they're doing is they're saying that, well, this one guy that I talked to, he was actually smart enough to say, the guy said he had a badge number. He said, I don't think you're legitimate, I'm going to hang up and call the sheriff's office. So, he did, and the guy called him back on his wife's phone. But he had already called the sheriff's office and found out it wasn't a legit person. And so I sent out an email today to everybody saying that the sheriff's office doesn't collect money, doesn't collect fines, doesn't come and collect money for contempt of court. If we come to your house, it's going to be a civil order or an arrest warrant, or we're just looking, knocking, doing knock and talks.
But you guys aren't going to call us anyway.
Right.
Like, you're not going to, the sheriff's department is not going to call a citizen.
No, that we don't, we, we're not, we're not going to call you and say that we have an order to pick you up. We're going to come and knock on your door and then when you answer it, we're going to put you in handcuffs and introduce you to the backseat of the car. But there's also, they're, they're running the same thing, they're running the same thing in Mecklenburg County. Then the other one, the guy called and said he was the captain with the US Marshals and both of these callers threatened to send the marshals to their house to try to intimidate people. But the one that, the one that, the second call I got was saying that you have to bring ten thousand dollars in cash to the Raleigh courthouse because you're in contempt of court for not showing up for jury duty in a federal case. So they're trying to use scare tactics to get people, get people money and people do it, believe it or not. So they, my neighbor got the same call today too in Charlotte. So they're, they're working both counties right now. And also the IRS scams will be starting shortly. So does anybody have any questions about, anything on?
Well, I'm looking at, yeah, I'm looking at the, I mean, they're, they're better than they have been, although I see a ninety-four on Marvin Road. But eighty-three is definitely down on Waxahaw Marvin Road from last month, which we had a hundred and nine.
If you're getting those speeds of ninety plus, they're probably motorcycles.
I have a, this is going to be an open talk, but real quick. What are we going to do about electric bikes? They're starting, we're starting to see them every year and all the day.
Okay, the only legislations that's been passed on electric bikes is they have to wear a helmet. That's the only legislation that's.
Not being sixteen years old, but those bikes go faster.
They've got, they've got e-bikes right now that go seventy miles an hour. There's no, somebody's going to have to get killed before legislation happens, unfortunately.
We can do legislation, I believe, and I'm going to check with Chaplain on this, if, on ordinance, like we did with our golf carts.
I could jump in here too because I've been doing some research on this. We've discussed that with PRG as well because there were conversations about whether e-bikes can be on the trails, natural versus paved and stuff. Interestingly enough, about a month or two ago, I had seen something that Waxahaw published, the Waxahaw Police Department. Now, they do reference a statute that does discuss that any e-bike that is designed, and I forget the amperage or voltage, but if it's over a certain voltage. And, well, and if it can go over twenty miles per hour, then that jumps into the requirement of needing to be registered and, you know, has to have a licensed operator. So something may be different than.
Yeah, I could talk to our attorney about that because I talked to Lieutenant May about that and pretty much there has been no, there hasn't been any legislation passed about treating them as motorized vehicles. That's what, that's what I'm being told. So that's what we have to go by.
As you were saying, is that I've trained people on bikes that go ninety to a mile an hour and they are needing to be licensed tag. There has to be.
Yeah, motor, yeah, you're talking about the electric motorcycles, but, but if it's, if it's classified as an e-bike, it's considered a bicycle, which is crazy.
Well, it'll, it also makes a big difference whether it has pedals or not.
Right, they're, they're supposed to have pedals.
But I'll share that information.
The little ones that look like they're motorcycles that go twenty miles an hour, they're still classified as an e-bike because they don't re, they don't meet the requirement as a motor, of a motorcycle, so.
Why wouldn't they fall under the same thing as a, as a moped? Because that's, because there's a distinction on the mopeds.
Because it's, because theoretically you have pedal power.
And I think there's a definition per se in the statute. If, if you look at that legislative bulletin that I sent you all on Friday that kind of re summarized everything, there's a Senate bill called Senate Bill Five Seventy-Six, which is e-bike definition and local red, regulation authority. There's a bill that was established in the Senate that controls the defin, excuse me, that would establish and control the definitions for a class one, two, and three electric bike and it would create a regulatory framework for their use. It was not passed. It was heard by the Senate, it was not passed. Doesn't mean they won't, it won't show up again in the, in the next session, but that's probably why.
Yeah, I, I was going to bring it up at PRG next, you know, to further our discussion, but I'll share it with Christina so that everybody can see what I discussed with the Waxahaw.
And then even if you pass an ordinance, then you're getting into a whole dogfight of if it's a public street that people are paying taxes to utilize. So you might get into some kind of issue there.
Yeah, you've got to look at your regulation.
We're already doing the rounds on parking and we can't enforce anything on public roads.
Well, I was doing, I was thinking something along the lines of we allow golf carts as long as they're, but you have to be sixteen years old.
Right.
But golf carts, we have specific legislation from the state that they're considering with the e-bike. It authorized the local governments and that gave us the authority. So that's what we're hoping to have. So they passed legislation to give you authority to pass local laws. And that's what they've looked at, but they did not pass.
But back to his point, somebody's got to die before.
Unfortunately, yeah. I hate to say it like that, but you know how DOT is, they won't put a, they won't put a roundabout in until, you know, somebody gets seriously injured or have killed, so.
What were the two foot patrols?
I'll, I'll talk to our attorney again, but as far, that's the first legislation I've heard about, so.
It didn't pass. It did not pass.
But at least they attempted, right?
Yeah. What, what were the two foot patrols? Foot patrols?
Probably over in the shopping center. A lot of these numbers are up because a lot of them are, SROs were doing a lot of work over the last few months on the roads, so.
Thank you.
All right, planning board report.
Plan board met September sixteenth. It was a very short meeting. All we did was discuss tax amendments and law development ordinance and hundreds following up on some things. So it's a short meeting. Any questions?
Thanks, Bob. PRG report, board report.
So number items, we had a pretty long meeting. First was, you'll see that on the agenda tonight, but we discussed a memorial bench and marker that we might have at Village Hall Park to memorialize former mayor Mike Konyak. We did look at the most recent version of the Village Hall landscaping plan and we did pass a motion and I believe that's on the agenda for tonight as well. We adopted our twenty twenty-six meeting schedule. We're going to continue pretty similar to the way that we've had it, mostly meetings first Tuesday of each month, nine AM. And we discussed retaining the conceptual trail maps on the village website. We did have a conversation around that because there were some requests from individuals in the public to say, hey, if that trail's not done, why is it on that map that's there? And they are color coded and it's clearly delineated that these are current trails, these are future trails. The conversation has always been that we've, we've thought on the PRG board and I think as a council as a whole that it's important to keep those on there even if they're just conceptualized for the future because we want to make sure that as residents move in or move out or things like that, that people are aware, you know, that there's at least a resource that you can go to so that somebody might know there could be a trail in a particular area or not. So that was one of the things we discussed. We discussed the trail scavenger hunts. There was another request that came from the HOA board of a subdivision that they, they expressed concerns about the scavenger trail hunt. That was discussed a couple of times here, but, you know, at least from the PRG perspective, we saw it as a very successful event. We had a lot of kids just collecting the little keychains that we put out on the trails. It really did seem to, to, you know, incent people to go out and use the trails and things like that. And then they would come here and trade in their little chain, keychains for, for a prize, you know? It was very successful and, and they're all for, the PRG board is, is for continuing those type of events and I think we've got one planned in the works. We had a discussion about prohibiting motor vehicles on all village trails. And what we had to point out to some folks, even on PRG board, is that we already have a prohibition of any type of motorized vehicles on our trails. So that's really something that we've already got in our ordinances. There was one issue that was brought to our attention, but we got the sheriffs involved. There was nothing they could really do because while they took some pictures, it wasn't identifiable in any way. We did go out and we looked in that area where, you know, this vehicle was seen. There were some survey markers out there, so it could even potentially have been, you know, Public Works from the county or something like that. But, you know, just so everyone knows, we don't allow any motorized vehicles on, on our trails currently and that is by ordinance. We, we did discuss, it was brought up about having all, all day rentals of Marvin Eford Park. By and large, the PRG board seemed to feel that because that could inhibit with mo, other residents, you know, fair use of the park in or out, that we, we didn't necessarily think that that was a good idea. So, you know, that's what we, we shared as feedback to council. And we did a Tree City update, which also included the fact of why we're doing Arbor Day now. It's part of our requirements that we're kind of checking our boxes off for our Tree City attainment. And that was pretty much it.
One thing I'll just mention real fast is we did do a, a quick tour to the Preserve Trail, the trailhead that's over here and we're replacing the sign that's out there. It was just a sign that we had relocated from the old Village Hall. We had, we had it extra and we had put it up over on this trailhead because it looked good. Since, the logo's changed, so we're going through and getting some quotes for a new trailhead sign. There was some, kind of some discussions about maybe bringing it back to you all and putting those at some of our other trails too. So Austin's working on some quotes for that and you might see that at your work session or another meeting later.
I still need to get the dimensions and do a good mockup of what the sign would look like. We have one from the branding package. It's directional. It says, you know, this way, Village Hall, this way, White Dogwood Lane, twenty minutes, something like that. So I'll do a few mockups, get some dimensions and get some quotes. It shouldn't be that expensive. We would just need to put them on posts.
Well, and I think the question also is, is, yeah, we have that one there, but, you know, from consistency purposes and, and while one might not be all that much money, you know, we have to consider, are we then going to do it at all the trailheads, you know, and so forth? So that's, you know, part of what we have to consider.
It'd be probably around a dozen, two dozen signs if I had to guess just from the trails that we have. The, the size of themselves, it shouldn't be that expensive. The park sign, I think, was only five hundred dollars or so.
Okay, any questions for John? Next up, coffee with council. Who was there? I was there. No, but I came in late. I wasn't scheduled to be there, but I did come in there, so.
Was it the latest?
That was on October second.
What's that?
October second.
It was in the morning.
The last one I was at, nobody came.
Yeah, nobody came.
Yeah.
I knew that. We had a nice conversation with council members. I wasn't going crazy, but I've been trying to make all of them regardless, so.
It was me and Wayne and I think Joe showed up right there.
But again, that's a reminder, we have that opportunity to discuss what's going on in the community or any questions you have. We appreciate you just coming and it's an open, it's open. We're there for a full hour or so. But, all right, moving on. Wuma report. No one went to the last, what's the hands up?
People are clicking pens and Jill's about to lose it. She thinks it's me, so I'm showing her. Not me, it's you two. It would have been at the, it would have been at the end of September.
Yeah, I asked if anyone could attend. I don't think anyone was able to attend the last one.
After our last one.
But they didn't have much up on our, our work, they didn't have much on the agenda anyway, so. So that, there was really nothing to report there. Onto consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Further discussion. All's in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. Unfinished business. Information on wounded heroes update. Who's got that?
I got that. I just wanted to give this to you all because we are trucking along on this project. I put the plans back in here so you can see it. This is the conceptual that you all had approved. Looks like they just basically cut and paste their scope of work for their engineering services and put in this email for their update. But essentially, reading through all this, essentially we will start construction in the spring of next year, so. I did, I did ask them, yeah, I did ask them if they have secured funding and I haven't got a response back yet, but we've been, we've been in communication with them and everything's been rolling along pretty smoothly, so. We hope to have those a hundred percent plans in the next couple of months, but that's where we're at on that project. And just so you all are aware, in the beginning of this, we did advise them that they would have to go through the, through their own permitting process. We were trying to do the project of the Village Hall Park and this project together, so it would be one permit, but that timelines didn't match, so they're going to have to go through that process by themselves for this.
Any questions? That's just an update, right?
Yeah.
Discussion, next up, discussion consideration of stormwater inventory and repairs.
So as you all know, a couple of months ago, I think it was right around the time that Davy had left, we did do a stormwater analysis. It's a project that we approved last year. Took quite some time to get finalized. That was presented to you all. AMT actually came, you probably don't remember this, but AMT came and presented this information. There was some questions at that time. And then Davy departed and we kind of did not bring this back up. But, so in front of you is the estimates again. It's all the repairs that were needed for any of the piping that's underground. We're currently looking at a total of seventy-seven thousand dollars. I've just put in eighty-seven thousand with contingency. The way the village has done this in the past is we've only handled things as they've been damaged. So it's kind of, when something fails, we go out and we, we fix it and that's typically how most places do it because you don't really know what you, you know, until something happens. So we've been proactive enough to go out and kind of scope and camera some of these areas and identify these failures or potential failures. And that's what you all have before you. We do have some money set aside for this. It, it's not much. So if we decided to go through with this project, I would recommend doing all of it instead of trying to piecemeal a couple of things here or there. My recommendation is we do this every five years. We have put in our road tracker system to do these analysis every five years. So we're looking at things more periodically and we address all of the failures in one cycle and then we can put in some emergency money as budgets allow and we can address things that happen in between. But if we're addressing all the identified failures or potential failures in, in the year of the studies, we shouldn't have that much within the, you know, couple of years that leads up to the next assessment phase.
Would you recommend putting aside a certain amount of money every, every year?
We typically, Jill, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, I think we typically budget around thirty thousand dollars for these types of issues. Let me see.
I mean, like, like we do for equipment, like, you know.
Oh, like a capital reserve?
Yeah, like, like ten thousand a year or something like that in capital reserve.
We can add that in.
Because we know that we're going to have maintenance. I mean, that's, that's a given. So if we're going to do this every five years, we should be prepared with, with the money and, you know, set aside for it so that we don't have to look around for money to, to do it at that point.
For as long as, I mean, we haven't been in the road business, we've been in the road business since twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, if, if I remember correctly. We really haven't been immensely involved in terms of a lot of roads, a lot of, like a ton of roads until probably twenty eighteen ish is when we started picking them up. So for us to have as many roads as we do and the ages that they are, I mean, I think this is not bad. Eighty thousand dollars for the amount of, of work.
It's not. That's, that's very reasonable for what we have.
So there's a couple of places that I've recommended we pull, we pull some funding for to, to do a lesser fund balance restricted for streets appropriation. We have ten thousand that we can pull from emergency repairs. I've still, that's still leaving me a little bit of money if something else fails between now and the end of the year. And then, let's see, we, I'm sorry, we budgeted eleven thousand for stormwater, not thirty. And then we have twenty, twenty thousand in emergency repairs. So I would only take ten from that just to leave me a little buffer. So I'm asking for a fund balance appropriation restricted from streets in the amount of sixty-six thousand dollars. And if I remember correctly, you did already put this in your. And if I remember correctly, you did already put this in your Powell Bill tracker, your road tracker, if I'm not mistaken. I think you did. So when Jill talks about this, it's already encompassing this amount that we would pull. This would take care of 100% of the problems that we've identified in this assessment, and then we have, like I said, earmarked another study five years from now to do this process again.
Christina, I'm updating their motion for them to say where the budget amendment would come from. So you said fund balance restricted streets?
Yes, fund balance restricted for streets.
So if we don't do this work, it could potentially end up costing us a lot more money and a lot more, like, infrastructure damage possibly to the roads?
Yes, it could. It could collapse. I mean, it's highly unlikely, but it could. The main thing, too, that would also benefit is a lot of subdivisions, you know, I don't know specifically which ones these have, these are in, but we have some subdivisions that have been claiming flash flooding in their subdivisions, and some of that could be related to just improper storm drainage. So getting some of these things addressed would hopefully alleviate some of the concerns that some of the neighborhoods are seeing. I've also sent this inventory over to DOT as well to ask them to take care of the problems that are identified in their system, so hopefully they'll do that. I haven't received confirmation from them, but hopefully they'll do that, we can do this, and we'll see some alleviation of some of that concern that people are seeing.
What I can tell you is if there is a failure in one of these systems that is a catastrophic failure, it could definitely cost more than $87,000 for one catastrophic failure with erosion and things of that nature. All it takes is one hurricane to hit us hard with a lot of water, and we could have some major issues. So preventive maintenance and keeping our systems in good working order is certainly going to be cheaper. It's just like doing maintenance on your car. If you change the oil regularly, you're going to get a lot more miles out of it.
Have a question. I know this is what we're talking about for subdivision, different things, but DEQ on their retention ponds that a lot of these storms run into, do we ever get anything from DEQ in the condition of their pond, retention ponds?
I don't think we do. Hunter's the better person to answer that question, but those permits are managed by DEQ. They send out inspectors every so often, and they handle that process.
Yeah, I know Lily goes out during construction and then after construction and does routine inspections. Lily Kay with NCDQ. And, but, for the most part, I, we don't ever receive anything. The only time that I, that we would is like if Lily is having trouble, for example, like Windmore, when the developer, all that stuff, like, she would coordinate or contact me to see if I had contact information because she was issuing notice of violations and such. But that's really the only time, is when a notice of violations issued, she'll sometimes let me know just so I'm in the loop, but that's about it.
I think I'll take you on one trip on pond because it's filled up so much. It's come back into the drainpipe under a street.
In Tolomor?
Between Tolomor and Amber Meadows.
Okay.
I mean, and that's, it's been there eight years, but it's already done it. Nobody's touched it. Eight more years, I don't know if any water will be coming through it or not.
Yeah, technically, what you, you're aware of this, technically, the HOAs, for the most part, hold the post-construction permits with DEQ. They're supposed to submit or certify each year that they're being routinely maintained or inspected by a certified person?
Hey, hang on. These ponds have never, they're still under the developer's name.
The post-construction permit's still, okay.
Yes.
Lily's going to be here Thursday. I'll talk with her on that. And I'll see.
Because it's now transferred over.
Okay. I'll check that out.
The stormwater, back to the stormwater inventory analysis and repairs, are there any objections to us going ahead and authorizing this construction to start, and we'll come back and do a budget amendment?
Yep. So, your motion?
Yes, please.
I'm going to make a motion to authorize the manager to authorize work to perform necessary repairs in stormwater infrastructure and advise staff to prepare a budget amendment not to exceed $66,000 from fund balance restricted for streets. You changed that.
I did. I did it on the fly.
Further, further discussion. All's in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Christina. Next up, adopt the ordinance to amend the general fund budget for general government transportation planning and parks as presented.
So moved. Okay.
Any discussion? No one's... Is there a motion on it?
I moved it.
She, okay. You wasn't quick enough. All right.
Jill, do you want to tell us anything?
She, I'll just say, she didn't put this on, it's a consent item, agenda item, but she didn't put it on there because she wanted to make sure we were good with the stormwater.
That's why I moved it.
Okay.
That's why I moved it. I knew that.
All right. Motion's on the table. Further discussion. All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion passes. Next up, consider adoption of the ordinance to amend unassigned fund balance, fund balance assigned for streets and fund balance assigned for future capital needs as presented.
Same thing. So moved.
Same thing. We're good? Any other questions? Further discussion. All's in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion passes. Next up, review and discussion of the current roads transportation 10-year-plus, 10-plus years projection tool.
So moved. No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I was like, really?
Just kidding.
I'll just go ahead and start real quick while Jill's passing this stuff out. So this is the most updated road tracker sheet. This has all of your projected expenses for the larger ticket road items. One of the topics that we've discussed over the last couple of months is the CRTPO STIP Marvin Loop Grant Project. We've been working really diligently to try to identify actual estimates and how much we think that project's going to be. Hunter's got some really good ideas. He's going to propose to you all. Jill has already kind of mapped some of the stuff in this road tracker sheet. So I'll turn it over to them, but you'll hear a lot of discussion about that and kind of where we are in this trajectory of roads.
All right. So a couple meetings back, I updated you guys on the Marvin Loop project after we got the estimates back and, you know, kind of talked about the potential shortfall based off those estimates and, you know, what direction council wanted me to proceed with, with, you know, looking at alternatives, reducing scope, material, and so on. I've had a lot of conversations with CRTPO, DuBarry, as well as NCDOT. So this little, the smaller handout, I just want to kind of go over. So when we got the, when DuBarry completed the 40% cost estimate, or 40% design plans with their cost estimates, the estimated construction cost for the Marvin Loop project was 4.1 million. We, per our award, it was estimated 1.3. Now, once again, these estimates are very conservative. They're, I mean, pretty much very high-end, meaning like this is probably like worst case of how much it's going to cost, and there's obviously some still, some other minor cost savings that can be done during the construction or, you know, working with some of the utility companies, potentially have them relocate the utilities instead of having the cost on us. With all that being said, taking, basically removing or doing asphalt compared to concrete reduces it roughly about $500,000. The, we looked at alternative scope reductions, one being stopping, instead of going all the way and having the crossing over to Woodcliff, stopping it at Wingfoot, which is the entrance there to Ennis Brook. So kind of slightly reducing the scope, that would save about $345,000. On top of, you've had two rezonings, and both of those rezonings, part of their, one of their conditions as well, what's outlined in the development agreement, is that they will either construct their portion as part with, in accordance with the approved, 100% approved plans, or pay a fee in lieu of the material and so, there's a number. With that being said, the green is scenario one, which would be having the developer construct. Or if the developer were to construct, you would see that that would save another $201,000 on the Marvin Oaks property, as well as $220,000 on Marvin Grove. Bringing the total savings to about 1.2 million, and then bringing that shortfall amount down to about 1.8. With that being said, with that shortfall, we would go to CRTPO for shortfall funding. If awarded, we would still have a 40% match of that awarded amount, so we would be looking at another additional $700,000 in that scenario. Once again, this is estimates and on the top end of those estimates. So the goal would obviously, that number would go down. The blue, which is scenario two, is a fee in lieu, which you still have some savings, so it shows the overage or shortfall amount at 2.2 million, getting roughly about $211,000 in fee in lieu. What we did for that is basically took the construction estimate savings and did half of it, just because, once again, those construction estimates include like the grading, the curbing gut, I mean, a lot of the aspects that they'll be doing anyway. So it's roughly just kind of the material cost, which is how it's kind of read in their development agreement. And you see that, then that brings the total down to 702,000 for the shortfall match. So, any questions on that? Kind of wanted to clarify.
So, option two, scenario two, instead of scenario one, is that those two developments would give us a fee in lieu, which would be a number under what we estimated it would cost in scenario one. But that's primarily because, we'd consider that potentially because a lot of the work would already be done. So you would really only be focusing on the asphalt trail itself.
Correct. Because it's kind of one of these things that we're trying to coordinate a lot of different projects and a lot of moving parts all at once. We wrote it in the development agreement to kind of have some of that flexibility where, yes, because if the developer, if they get their approved plans and they begin construction, they're already mobilized and doing some of that work that's included in the construction estimate, if that makes sense? So essentially, yeah, if they build it, it's, because it would be cheaper for them to build it, if you think about it, to an, because they're already mobilized and paying for what they're doing on their side. And so that fee in lieu portion is just, yes, the material, and it takes out some of the mobilization and other aspects that are already factored in the total estimate.
Would the intent, though, be that we would still be doing it kind of on the same schedule and then concert with when those developers are developing?
Yeah, because the Marvin, I mean, it's slated to begin construction, I think, in either end of 2026, early 2027, is what DuBarry and I last talked with DOT. So it, just kind of lining it up, per se. So if those properties aren't developed, or have not moved dirt or had plans approved by that time, what it reads in the development agreement is, I believe, once the, we get those 100% cost estimates approved by NCDOT and go to let the project, they have 60 days to either, no, one, tell us if they're going to construct their portion or pay their fee in lieu, and then also if they're paying that fee in lieu, they have to pay it within that 60 days. So the goal would be is it's all done at once or at least lines up. So for example, like if Marvin Grove was to hypothetically break ground tomorrow, they haven't submitted their construction documents yet, they're pending, but let's just say we've reviewed them and they break ground. Well, if they wanted to construct their portion, it would be based off the 100%. We would have to hold off on that. They would have to hold off until we get the final plans approved from NCDOT, but then they could elect to construct it. It just kind of just, it's all timing.
So that's a lot of words to say. In short, the previously stated cost overruns that Hunter brought to you last month or whatever, of $3 million, whatever the number was, essentially boils down to roughly $700,000 at this point, based on the assumption that we will have shortfall funding from CRTPO estimated in fiscal year '26, '27?
Yeah, we would go for, that window would be this time next year.
And changing it from concrete to asphalt, taking into account fee in lieu or getting the developer to pay for their portion of it, and then doing a minor scope amendment of stopping it at a certain location, Golden Bell? I don't, or wherever you said.
It would stop at Wingfoot.
Wingfoot, sorry, Wingfoot. So assuming all of those things, that $3 million that was stated at the last meeting now boils down to $700,000-ish.
And again, this is like worst-case scenario. These are like fully inflated prices.
Correct, yes.
Chances are, they're not even going to come anywhere close to this.
Yeah, because like, for example, in the right-of-way phase, we have $157,000 in that kind of, for that phase. That includes the right-of-way utility relocation, as well as any type of land procurement that we'd have to get, we'd have to, you know, pay for an easement or such. For the most part, we've already, it's all kind of within DOT right-of-way or where we're not. We have an easement. There's maybe one property that we'd have to get one. So that's where I'm thinking potentially, we're not going to be using that whole $157,000. So that, that then lowers our number of what the potential shortfall would be.
So now I'll let you.
So now Jill will tell you how that fits into the mold of the Powell Bill tracker and the road tracker.
Okay, so I did plug those numbers in. They didn't change a whole large amount from the last time that you guys saw this, but this gets updated almost every day. So now you'll see the fee in lieu is around $200,000. That's being conservative. He just mentioned $211,000 on his presentation. I just plugged in 200. The shortfall funding is in there. That is the, kind of the conservative estimate of what that would look like. And then down below, I've also updated the construction portion under our expenses to kind of reflect moving forward with the higher construction costs on this portion of the loop. So at this point, if we decide to move forward with this, completing this portion and making the changes that Hunter is recommending as far as asphalt and concrete and kind of changing the scope, then what I would do next is just kind of have him sort of shore up the dates, for sure, of maybe get a little bit more clarity around the dates for some of this. And then from a cash flow standpoint, I do just need to remind you all that this is a reimbursable grant, so I am going to have to put out the full $4 million for the construction of this and then get a large portion of it back. So I'm going to have to keep that in mind as we are making these decisions, because even though we're going to get it back, I still have to make sure I have it to pay it out, you know? Now, the good news is, we have done a great job of investing our idle funds, so we do have those funds invested away and earning us lots of interest every month. So that's great. The money is there, but we just have to, because we have so many moving parts with Village Hall Park that also is reimbursable, things like that, I just have to be a little bit careful from a cash flow standpoint, which I think also was another reason why we might have recommended holding off on the other grant earlier tonight, so. And do you guys have any questions for me about the tracker itself?
Yes. Can you tell me why we go from '26, '27, we're green on the very last line? Then we go '27, '28, we're red. '28, '29, we're red, and then we go back to green. '29, '30, '31, '30, '31, and then we're back to red?
Yeah, it's just because of when large construction payments are coming due on the loop.
And then we get reimbursed.
We will get reimbursed. That's already reflect.
That's not why they go back to green?
Yeah, it's just only in the, only in the years where we have these large payments due. Obviously, we're not, we're not going to be able to pay for that out of Powell Bill, so we'll pay for it out of what we have. We'll exhaust the money that we've set aside in streets. And, you know, in '27 to '28, I mean, right now, it's a $56,000 shortfall. Y'all can cover that in your ad valorem from the budget. I would probably just do a general fund transfer. I'm honestly not even concerned about '28 to '29. It's only $120,000. I think we can absorb that as well, so.
That also reflects the Waxahaw Marvin Bonds Grove Roundabout, too, which is a longer project.
It does not, because that is in a capital. So what you'll see is, if you look up above, under additional revenue earmarked for streets, like the second kind of set of boxes at the top of your sheet, you'll see where it says one cent for roundabout. You might notice that that's empty for fiscal year '24 to '25, all the way through '27 to '28. That's because for those fiscal years, should you all continue, which you have said that you are going to continue earmarking some money, it's being put in a capital fund to pay for Bonds Grove, to pay for that roundabout there. Starting in '28 and '29, I've got the amounts listed there for you of what I think a penny would be worth then. But until or unless you all decide to actually do that and/or earmark it for another capital, which would be another roundabout or a critical intersection improvement, it's going to stay there for now, so you can just see what that revenue would do. And at any time, I can take it out and show you what happens when you take that penny out, but for now, you've instructed me to leave it, so it's there.
Thank you. So if that penny comes out, these numbers change drastically, especially when you get into '28, '29?
Yes, yes and no. So down at the bottom of the spreadsheet, you'll see two more intersection improvements. You'll see the roundabout at Joe Carr Marvin Road, and then you'll see Stacy Howie and Waxahaw Marvin. So those were... And then you'll see Stacy Howie and Waxall Marvin. So those were proposed to you during the Critical Intersection Survey that the Marvin residents completed. So I have them on here. You all have not made a decision to move forward with those, but because this is a planning tool, I put it on here so you can see how much it's going to cost and when. And then you can see what the impact has on the bottom line, should you choose to decide to move forward with those. So if, if you were to take those projects off and you were not going to do any more roundabouts or not do any improvements at those intersections, which is not what the residents said they wanted, but if that's what this council or a future one decided to do, then, then we could have conversations about not necessarily needing that penny going forward after the Bonds Grove Roundabout is complete. Does that make sense?
And how about if we turn the state, the roads back over to the state? Is that an option?
The, I mean, the state's not going to take them, is my understanding. I don't think the state will take them back.
I have no clue. I've asked them. I mean, I've asked them that question, but I, I personally don't think they will, but I could be completely wrong.
No matter if even the thought of giving them back to the state would be, I don't know, I guess if we just want our roads to go completely to to pot, no pun intended. I guess we could
I would also have to research.
entertain that option. I mean, but
Possibly.
I guess there's, you know, as a council, we have to look at all of our options and, and I have through the birds have heard that there are people that go, why don't we just turn them back over to the state? I think that's, first off, I think it's an absolute insane thought. But these numbers would for someone be totally turned upside down if that were the case, but I, I don't think that's what we would want to, would want to go. But I just, I'm just throwing that out there as a topic of discussion, because there are people that obviously think that just turn them all back over to the state.
I think, I think we could ask, but I'm guessing.
You know what? I, I don't, I'm not asking for you to ask.
Well, I mean, we could get an answer if we, if we needed to. I'm guessing because they won't even take on new neighborhood roads, I don't see why they would take back ones that they've already given away, but.
Then let's get an answer.
I've already asked them. So I mean, I've asked them.
I, I think.
I don't, I don't very easily get a response.
The, the responses, answers itself, but I'm just being, just.
Well, you're asking that, why don't you ask another question? If they're willing to take them back, would there be any funding for them?
Well, when they answer the first question, I'll, I'll ask the second question.
So, I mean, I just wanted to be clear with people that are listening is that this council's intention is to move forward with funding the critical intersections of Waxall Marvin, Stacy Howie and Marvin Road and Joe Carr Road. I mean, that, that is why we are putting aside the money above revenue neutral that we went up, which was about a half of a penny. So that is absolutely this council's intention is to start funding that immediately. So now, whatever, you know, whatever happens in the future past this, you know?
Just one other thing too, when we talk about the one cent for the roundabout that's earmarked for the current and potentially the future roundabouts, even if we were to decide not to do those roundabouts and earmark that money, it's not like we could go back a cent off our taxes, because we're only at 5.6 now. And if we went back a cent, it would bring us below the required five cent that Powell bill requires. Is that correct?
Correct. Well, I mean, I'm not telling you what you can and cannot do, but it is correct that if you go below five, you would lose your Powell bill funding.
Gotcha. Okay.
And that's a state mandate?
Exactly.
Right.
Unless you got state law changed.
We're working on that.
All right, I'll show it to you again next month.
Fantastic. Thanks, Jill.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you. Next up, we have a discussion of PRG Board Recommendation for Memorial for Former Mayor Mike Cognac.
All right, John was talking about this earlier. I'd, I put a memo in your agenda packets for this, just to show really a depiction of what PRG is recommending. Sorry, I'm opening on my screen so I can look at it with y'all. They're recommending both a bench, something either polywood or metal, something that would be long lasting, maybe with a small placard installed actually on the bench, but they mainly want to focus on a, a a stone marker to be sat across from the bench, so that if someone is sitting on the bench, they have to look at it basically. A stone with a, probably a, I would assume that's a bronze plaque of some sort, with the, the draft inscription that we have here that Councilman Barisus wrote. And he did, this has been all approved by the PRG board and with the Cognac family. If this is something that you guys like, we'll go ahead and start doing pricing for this. I would estimate probably around, I would say up to probably $5,000 just for the plaque and the stone. And if we have to do, if we have to pay for installation, if that's something that we can't do ourselves in-house, I would say around 5,000 right now. But that's before getting formal quotes.
And just one thing in our reasoning why there's kind of the separate bench and, and then the stone and plaque is that the bench itself, you know, even if it's polywood or something else, it's going to be need to be replaced from time to time. So you wouldn't want to have to replace the plaque each time or something like that, or, you know, retrofit it. So it was thought that if you had the stone there and, and, you know, depending on the cost, you could do one or the other, you know? In that case, you would want to have the plaque on the bench. But the thinking was also oftentimes if you see plaques on bench, they're on kind of the backside of the bench. So, you know, if you have a bench facing, you know, kind of the walkway, nobody would see it necessarily if it's, if it's on the back or if you had it on there, you know, people are kind of leaning up against it.
Are you guys looking for a decision tonight?
No, no.
Okay.
This is just.
This is just, are you, do you guys like it? If so, we'll go ahead.
Yes, I think it's, I think it's.
Because we haven't even gotten pricing.
I think it's lovely. Let's look at pricing and see what we can do.
And the only thing I'd say is if you're familiar with, what's the Peach Place right down there, An clothes Springs? If you've ever been on site there, their memorials or thing are, are like Plexiglas or glass and they have etched into, it's really elegant and, you know, nice. But they also have, when you hike there, they also have benches with a variety of plaques in there. And I, I never really paid attention. I hike pretty often in that area, so I'll have to kind of make sure I watch that. But this looks really nice. So I think it'd be great.
So we will proceed.
All right, that's all we had on that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Next up, we have Consider Adoption of 2026 Village Council Meeting Schedule. Did you guys all get a chance to look at the dates?
So just a couple notes to note the changes from last year, because we do have a few. Last year, you guys said that you thought the retreat started a little too late in the day at 10:00 AM. So we did bump that back to 9:00 AM for each day. So nine to five, probably nine to four, nine to four, nine to noon for the three days. We did not schedule a work session for January, just with preparing for the retreat. That's going to really run us towards the end of the month. So we really don't have time to prepare for a January work session. We moved up the annual joint meeting with the Planning Board from March into February to, because of staff absences. And the same thing for the April budget work session, regular meeting. We moved that from the second Tuesday to the third Monday of the month, Monday, April 20th, to accommodate known staff absences for that time.
Does anyone have any issues with any of the dates?
I have a question that since getting into office, on Thursdays, I, I teach college classes for the work sessions. So it's difficult for me to go to those and for what would be going from here. You know, nobody says one has to be retired, for example, to be a councilperson. So it may be difficult for other people to get here at 9:00 AM. I know that they tend to go longer. So that's why we kind of shifted them in the morning time. Just a thought and consideration, would it be a problem with doing them in the evening time at 5:00 PM or would it be too long? Do you think the work sessions would be too long? They go on till nine or 10:00 versus the morning?
I'd, I'd just say, I think you just have to look out for, for staff. I mean, that's just one of the things that I would mention there. We'll do whatever you guys want, but just keep that in, in mind.
I, I'm just bringing that up.
Those meetings normally run from 9:00 AM to probably 12:31 o'clock. So 6:00 PM would put it about, if it was at six, it puts it about 10 o'clock. Five, it puts it about nine. It's real, it's whatever you guys decide. You could also move it to a different morning.
It's a long day for you guys.
You could also move it to a different morning of the week. Whatever you guys decide to do, that's what we'll obviously implement.
I do think staff needs, I mean, I'm not going to be here, but I do think staff needs to be, you know, taken into consideration, because then you're going to have tons more extra time that they've got to take off in terms of like they get, you know, comp hours and things like that. It makes it, it makes it definitely more complicated.
And, and one thing too, I'll just mention is you have certain, like Austin and Hunter and Paul me that are here anyways for other meetings, like Planning Board and
Yeah.
Parks and Recreation, but that's during the day too. But Hunter especially will be beaten up pretty hard because he's going to have the comprehensive stuff coming up shortly.
The other thing too is, you know, many of our staff don't live five or 10 minutes away. They may live 45 minutes to an hour away. You know, so if you're talking about four hour meetings that are starting at 6:00 PM, that's 10, you know.
Yeah, it makes for a long day.
That is a consideration to make for them.
Now, if we need to move the date for you, like a different day of the week.
Have you thought about teaching in the evenings?
I'll ask the students. Yeah, they'll love it.
You're the sensei. Don't you get to design?
I mean, I think, I think we can probably adopt the schedule and we can kind of maybe, you guys can kind of talk offline about it, because we don't, because we don't, because we don't have another, I mean, we've got a work session.
Generally, you know, Mondays or Tuesdays.
I mean, I, I would entertain a different day of the week if that's.
Yeah, that would be not be a problem. Mondays or Tuesdays.
Real issue.
No big deal.
Yeah. It's, if you did were to move it to another morning, it wouldn't be a conflict with anything to my knowledge.
Tuesdays.
Yeah. Hmm?
Tuesday mornings.
Yeah, you wouldn't, you really wouldn't run into anything else to be on our calendars to my knowledge right now. We'd have to go back and check to confirm.
That'd be great. I don't have any problem with that. I don't have any problem with this as it is. It's just, I'm just asking, you know, in terms of the morning.
In fairness, it may change anyway.
If, if you guys want to make changes now, I can just change the, the Thursdays to Tuesdays. And we can cut, we can go check our calendars and come back and let you know if there's any other changes we would need, but it's really whatever you guys decide.
And, and that was going to be my second question. If we adopt this, whatever we decide, can it be changed?
Yes. Yes, you can change, you can change your meeting schedule for any meeting as long as it's seven days in advance.
Well, I have no issues with any of the dates or times, so I'm good, but do you need a vote on it tonight?
I do. So I just need to know if you're making any changes. If you are, we'll adopt as amended. If not, we'll adopt as presented.
I'm just going to make a motion to adopt the 2026 Village Council Meeting Schedule as presented, and then you guys can talk offline and figure out what you actually want to do.
Okay. Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
We'll note that's the first time you guys have not amended this.
Baby steps.
Looked at the school calendar, didn't you? Before you put anything on there.
Yeah, man, there, there you go. You didn't check on my vacation time though, but. Open topics, guys. What have we got? Anyone?
You do.
I do. But it was regarding, which I'll, it'll be very short. It was regarding electric bikes. So I think we're going to address that. We, we can't do anything now as far as ordinance goes, and that's good to know. Because I'm getting asked that question a lot lately. Second thing, and this is open to everyone, I was invited to a ribbon cutting ceremony at Dewali Festival. Is that right? Okay, Dewali Festival, which I'm sort of familiar with. It's Indian culture and it's on the 18th, it's Saturday, which I am not available, but I reached out to the individual and there'll be some Marvin residents there. And they would like a representative from our village to attend that. And he was very excited if any of you guys could possibly make that on Saturday.
I believe it's in the Drayton Hall neighborhood, which is in between Marvin and Weddington.
And there's apparently a, a number of Marvin residents. So is anyone open to that? And I can have, I think it's safer to probably instead of just put that email out to all of council, have you?
It's a social event, so I'm not, I'm not worried about a quorum issue or anything.
It's a ribbon cutting in a neighborhood?
Yeah, I think it's a Dewali celebration.
So it's not a ribbon cutting?
I thought it was a ribbon cutting.
I'm not, I don't think it's.
Oh, you know what?
That was a different one you're thinking of.
A different one that I will be there for. It's the end of this month. It's for a dentistry.
That's.
What time?
You have the email at my computer's.
Yeah, give me one second. I will double check that for you.
I think it'd be good.
All right, here you go. It is, it is Saturday. It is, yeah, it's for community gathering, celebrate Dewali, the Festival of Light, Saturday, October 18th. It's at 6:00 PM. And yeah, it's in the Drayton Hall neighborhood. The, I have the address in my, in the email here.
Home address.
It's, it's a residence, yes.
And there should be, he said 20 to 30 Marvin residents there. So I'm just unfortunately unavailable. Will be out of town that day. So.
They did think, they, they did think their neighborhood was in Marvin. I did notify them that they're in, they're in unincorporated Union County. But they, they definitely still wanted to.
Good opportunity to bring them in, you know? I mean, it is a volunteer program.
Yeah. I'd be willing to do it.
Okay. All right.
So I, I'll forward you that email.
All right, thanks, guys. That's all I had. Anything else? Sorry.
Uh, sorry.
A review of action items is up next.
All right, going back through, you guys have your meeting schedule adopted for 26. So I'm going to go ahead and send you calendar invites and get all that set up in the background. Zoom meetings, YouTube live streams, all that stuff. If you want to change those dates, if you had the, if you anticipate changing those dates, let me know as soon as possible, so I can get this on another agenda in the future and I can go ahead and make corrections to calendar invites. We're going to move forward with the memorial for Mike Cognac. We'll start looking at pricing. Going back through, you guys are going to see the road tracker tool again. Got your budget amendments. We're going to move forward with the stormwater infrastructure repairs and bring a back a budget amendment. We're going to move forward with the Villa Tall Park landscaping plan. You won't see action on that for a while, but that is approved. You guys have your 2026 holiday closure schedule adopted, so I will send invites for those and get those on the website and everything. And sorry, scrolling back through here. Christina's going to inquire about the survey requirements and the old driveway permit for the emergency exit for Marvin E. Ford Park. I think that's about it. Christina, do you have anything? Oh, sorry. We'll get an answer on roads if they can be given back to DOT. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have the review of the mayor pro-kim list.
I'm getting it open.
I said it right?
Oh, you did? I know, it's crowded.
I wasn't on speaker.
You were.
Ready, Austin?
Yes.
All right, um, stormwater study, did that today?
You did.
Are we good with that?
We'll check it off.
Contractor Gabe's Services, I feel like that happened because it started last week.
Which one is that?
It actually starts on Friday, but it is done, yeah.
Contract.
Yep.
Executed. Yes, right, I'm sorry, I can't, can't do that. Overgrown Marvin's Village Limits sign on Marvin Road?
DOT will be addressing it.
We're leaving that on.
The executed contract on Angel Lee Construction?
Yes, they, they should notice proceed on that one.
Uh, Mary Lena, did you invite Mr. Payne to speak at the October 30th work session?
Um, yes, I did, and I will reach out to them again.
Con, confirm with me when you do, so I can actually get it on the agenda.
I understand. I'm sorry. Did I do that?
You did that.
You usually shut off the mic, so she wasn't on the mic.
Oh, sorry.
That whole time. I, I was of the assumption that he was going to call you.
I've never con, I don't, I've never had contact with him.
Cause I reached out to him a second time and I got no response from him.
I don't have his information.
I will make a note to call him.
I don't know if he has mine. I was kind of relying on you for that, Joe. If he, if you want to put him in touch with me, you can. I'll just get. If he, if you want to put him in touch with me, you can, I'll just get him on the agenda, and if he wants to send me any presentation materials, he can. I just, just let me know once he's confirmed, because I don't want to put it on the agenda if he's not, if he's, if he's not going to be able to confirm for that meeting.
Yeah, I should be, I should be on the reason, but, oh, okay.
All right. Moving forward with repairs to curbs, gutters, and sidewalks?
Yes, we're still working on that.
Still working on that, so we're not ready to do that. Okay, have you executed the contract with Kim Lee Horn?
Yes.
Okay, check that off the list, please. The barn repairs.
We potentially got it approved by insurance, so we're waiting on that.
Okay. So we're still waiting on that. Hunter, did you talk to Beechwood about the dead tree?
Yeah, DOT is actually going to be removing those, hopefully within the next week or two.
Check that off the list, and then construction easement, come on back. Marvin Grove Developer.
Sent the comments from Chaplain, as well as, yeah, sent the comments from Chaplain to them, and conveyed to them that hopefully to have that for this meeting, it wasn't, so I'm expecting that for the work session.
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have council comments. Anyone want to volunteer? I usually go to the end.
Just wanted to thank all of the candidates that participated in the Candidates Forum, as well as the public that came out. Number of residents, probably had about forty or fifty people there, in addition to the candidates and so forth, but it was a great opportunity to ask questions of the folks that are running, and just wanted to thank everyone that was able to participate.
Okay. Andy? No comment?
No comment.
Wait.
Want to thank the staff and the deputies.
Okay. Jamie?
Yes, I'd like to take this, I guess, as quick time to address a hot topic of concern, apparently. Since my house is sold, I continue, the purpose, as I've said all along, the purpose of me selling my house is to downsize, and as one might could understand, is that trying to downsize in the Village of Marvin is not a very easy thing to do. I continue to do so. We've come across some that I thought were promising, but I'll continue to do so. Meanwhile, I do reside in the Village of Marvin, and I do reside in Firethorn, as I did before. And until something changes, I will certainly let the council know and let the constituents know of my, of my change, but for those who have continued to just contact staff and everyone else, Dale's going to reference you to, to the Board of Elections, and we've, I've already addressed this with our council and with the Board of Elections as well. So, but I'm hopeful that, and if anyone has any recommendations of a downsize in Marvin, certainly throw them my way, and if you still have concerns, feel free to, feel free to contact me personally.
Would you consider age-restricted?
It's not as old as you are, Joe.
Joe, I just turned thirty, so I am not an option for age-restricted. But no, and the last thing, too, just again, thanks, thank you, staff. I know putting up with the phone calls and stuff like that, but for all you do. Tyler, thank you for all you've done. I didn't recognize you. I walked in, I went, where's Tyler? But thank you, and certainly the Sheriff's Department and all our law enforcement that keeps us safe throughout here, thank you.
That's it.
Kimberly.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to Tyler for all your hard work. You will be missed. You know, I'm glad that you got a grown-up haircut, finally, so.
Clean up nice.
But thank you. You will be missed, you did a great job here. Early voting starts on Thursday, so if you can't be out on Election Day, which is November fourth, then you can start early voting in Monroe, at the library. Be there, and you can register early voting, so if you haven't already done it, registering, you can do it early voting, you cannot register the day of. Go vote.
That's it?
Yeah, I'm done.
I do not want to cut you off.
I know.
I'll just add to that real quick, not only early voting, but also absentee ballots need to be in to, or requested by the twenty-first, okay? Then you have all the way up until the fourth at seven PM to get that mailed into the Union County, that was my understanding, so absentee ballots are available online, you can get them, and if you have kids at college, that type of thing, so, but that's one other thing that I confirmed. Had a couple things happen over the, since the last meeting. Furman did Family Weekend, so we got out, my daughter, my youngest, is there, and my oldest went there, and now she works there, so we get to see two of our kids when we go there, but I probably saw one of the most exciting football games when they played East Tennessee, and it was just a fantastic game, fantastic weekend, loved the school, and so thank that. And then the kids were right back. I think a lot of the family members here in Marvin, if you have kids at college, this was fall break for a lot of you, so my kids just went back today, and safe travels to them and to all the others that were here. Hope you had a chance to spend some quality time with your kids. I had some adult conversations, which was great, which hasn't happened in a while. Let's see, Tyler, definitely going to miss you. I mean, you were well-respected here, and I think everyone really enjoyed working with you. Everyone that, on my end outside of the village that I talked to that had to work with you really enjoyed you, so I wish you all the best in your endeavors and your plans. One final thing, I see a lot of things when it comes to reports and when, you know, ads doing the reports and stuff, I just want to encourage everyone, you know, I know this is old, everybody says it, if you see something, say something, or just make some notes, take some photos, any, anything you see, and if there's things going on, I mean, I'm pretty proud of this community. We have very, very low crime rates when you look at overall, and I think people sometimes lend themselves to it because they just leave their car door open, but I think we have a very, very safe community, very proud of it, and, but things happen, things can happen, and when they do, take as much documentation as you can, that helps our police officers out when they're doing that, and the more information, and if you're going to complain about something, you call the police, we strongly recommend you ask for a police report. I know that puts work on you, but you're doing it anyways, but having that police report is also sometimes helpful, so, but anyways, thank you, staff, as well, for all the hard work here, and I appreciate the updates that we get from you guys. Really appreciate that. And with that, I'll need a motion to adjourn.
Nope.
Yep, I'm going to make a motion to recess in a closed session pursuant to NCGS 143318.11836 to consult with an attorney, to consult with an attorney-client.
Sorry, to consult with an attorney to preserve the attorney-client.
Okay, all right. I was like, that doesn't make sense. To consult with an attorney to preserve attorney-client privilege and to discuss personnel.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. We're in closed session?
Yep. We don't need our thingies, do we?